Good evening. This meeting will come to order. This is the Zoning Board of Appeals, June 2015 meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in store.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Ms. Eggleson has indicated that she will not be joining us, and so far we have not seen Mr. Vazino. Mr. Tizola?
Here.
Mr. Haberman?
Here.
Ms. Frante?
Here.
Mr. Soto?
Here.
Mr. Dubois?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Also present this evening are Meg Green, our Recording Secretary, and Stephen Harris, our Zoning Officer. Mr. Vazino is not here right now. So, Mr. Thomas, will you fill in for Mr. Vazino? Thank you.
Absolutely.
For your attention, the first item on the agenda is 553 West Avenue. What should the corrective address have been?
It should have -- sorry. It was misrepresented in the advertisement as 533 West. It should have been 553 West.
Okay. So, it's going to be rescheduled to our July meeting. If anyone feels there's anyone on this commission that might be a conflict of interest to their agenda, please let us know. Mr. Haberman will proceed.
Item number two, 59 Hillside Avenue, Zone R-5. Thomas Lynch Esquire Attorney for John Turek and Donna Weaver. Owners vary Sections 3-1-4-1. South side yard to 8.46 feet where 10 feet required, four stories where three required, 39.5 feet in height where 35 feet allowed. 4.1.4 South Deck stairs to 4.4 feet where eight feet permitted to build a single-family home, MAP 49 Block 724 Parcel 2.
Before we get started, just for clarification, is the first item is rescheduled? Is anyone for that?
Robin. Do you have a question?
No. Next month -- are you here for the first one?
Yeah.
West Avenue is rescheduled till next month.
And do you have a question?
It'll be the second Tuesday of July. It's July 14th. Okay? So, right now, we're on 59 Hillside Avenue.
Can we make a question to the question? And if we're unable to drive through the room, you can hear me, if we're unable to make that meeting, would you direct our questions?
Can you come forward for just a minute? What's your question, please?
Hi, my name is Stephanie Ramsey. I live at 448 West Ave. I just wanted to know if we can't make that meeting this summer, who should we direct our questions to?
You have to make that meeting, or if not, you can draw something up and give it to someone else to present for you.
Okay.
Or email it in. Okay?
Who should I email?
To the Planning and Zoning Department, then.
Should I specify a particular person, attention to?
Meg?
Meg Green?
If you want to submit written comment about 553 West Avenue, you can send it to my attention via email or a letter. My email address is Mgreen, like the color, with an E at the end. So, M-G-R-E-E-N-E@ci.milford.co.us.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So, again, we're on 59 Hillside Avenue.
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just for the record, my name is Thomas Lynch. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Lynch, Trimbley, and Boynton, and my office is located here in Milford at 63 Cherry Street. And I'm here tonight with Jack Turek and Donna Weaver, who are the owners of the property of 59 Hillside Avenue. And we brought these plans back to you after an initial presentation was made to you back in December of 2014, when the board did deny the application without prejudice. We have spent basically the last six months trying to rework these plans. We've met with Joe Griffin, who's the Chief Building Inspector for the City of Milford. There were comments that I reviewed. I didn't represent Jack and Donna at the hearing back in December, but I did review the minutes of that meeting and also took particular interest in some of the comments, especially that Bill Soto had made relative to, you know, trying to work with Jack and Donna to make this plan work for them. This application is basically the same one that was brought to you back in December. There was a variance request for a generator on the site, which has been moved, so that particular variance request has been eliminated. And secondly, I just want to note for the record, there's been extensive discussion, and actually, a recommendation will be coming from the Regulation Subcommittee of the Planning and Zoning Board to amend the zoning regulations to now permit four stories instead of the presently restricted three-story requirement under our regulations. And I'll get into it in a minute. The fourth level on this structure actually is basically for storage and for the maintenance of the utilities for the property. But, you know, quite honestly, Jack and Donna's house was completely destroyed as a result of Storm Sandy, and they've spent the last two and a half years battling insurance companies in terms of claims and, you know, basically are here tonight with a request to build a reasonable house on this site. The prior structure, the actual residence consisted of some 1,500 square feet in gross living area, and the proposed structure has 1,600 square feet of living area. So, it's really a reasonably sized house, especially in relation to the other homes that have been constructed on Hillside Avenue as a result of the damage from both Irene and Sandy. And there's a number of handouts that I gave to you at the outset, and I'm going to go into comparing this structure with some of the others that were rebuilt. But I really want to start off with speaking with the basic hardship that's present here on this property. The way that the zoning regulations are currently configured, the measurement for houses and the 35-foot restriction for residences is based upon measurement from the mean average grade on the property. And this particular property, after the residence that was on there was demolished and the property was leveled, it's been measured that the average mean grade on the property is some 10 feet. And as we all know now, with the current location of the flood and the FEMA regulations for this site, with the 13-foot elevation that's required, plus the two-foot buffer that is required under the State Building Code, the measurement or the first level of the house has to be at an elevation of 15 feet. So, my argument to you right from the outset is that because of the fact this property is located in a flood zone, they're really put at a disadvantage from other residents that aren't in a flood zone. If someone else is on a level lot, the measurement from the grade, you know, you could build a 35-foot house from the grade of the lot. The structure here is 35 feet. Actually, it's 34 feet, 10 inches, as measured from the 15-foot elevation that's required by FEMA to the top of the house. And I'm going to get into the handouts with you in a second, but that's the crux of our argument to you, and I know that it was attempted to be articulated by Jack and Donna to you at the December meeting, but I'm supplementing the record with arguments of hardship and also documents that are being supplied to you, whether I'll be making reference to throughout my presentation. So, the first sheet of the plans that we've submitted shows the proposed dwelling. When you compare that to Sheet 2, which showed the prior development on the property, you can see glaringly that the building area and the lot coverage especially is going to be reduced. The prior development with the shed and the garage and the residence on the property showed the lot coverage being over 70 percent of the property. Our regulations in the R-5 Zone permit no more than 65 percent lot coverage, and that is going to be what the proposed dwelling will be. So, actually, we're, right from the outset, reducing or eliminating a nonconformity on the structure, I mean, nonconformity on the property with the proposed structure. Secondly, the other point I wanted to make is that by centering the lot, we are requesting side yard variances. I noted from the record in the minutes of the prior meeting that that didn't pose a great problem to the board when you were considering the application, but I did want to note, and I want to make it part of the record, that the proposed residence is now going to be centered, basically, in the middle of the property. It removes a residence that is closer, some -- the side yard setback before was 3.6 feet. It had a shed that was basically right on the property line. It had a garage which encroached upon the 20-foot front yard setback that's required in the zone. So, I think that the overall plan of development for this new residence really cleans the property up and, quite honestly, reduces and eliminates some prior nonconformities with the plan. So, really, it all comes down to the height of the building. And I want to start to direct your attention to the handouts that I've given to you. The first page that I handed to you is basically a summary of our arguments, that, again, a hardship exists here because of the topography of this lot. If you've been down on Hillside Avenue and actually examined the lot, once the house was demolished, it slopes down towards Long Island Sound. So, because of the fact that it does create more or less a gully, I was down on the property and saw the slope and the grade of the property, there really is a disadvantage for this particular site because, again, measuring from the mean average grade, from the 10-foot grade that's there, and then having the structure or the first floor of the house be at the 15-foot FEMA minimum, there's basically a five-foot penalty there. You know, if you're measuring from the grade versus what FEMA requires, that reduces the height of any house that would be built on this property by some five feet. So, our first page there basically goes through the arguments along those lines. Going from the second page onward, we've cited, you know, some instances where other states and other local communities have made amendments to their zoning regulations in terms of measurement of the height of buildings. Again, Milford, we have a measurement from the mean grade, but other towns, and I've cited them basically on Pages 4 and 5, Darien, Colchester, New Haven, those towns have specifically made reference in their zoning regulations as to the fact that new structures have to be built at the special flood hazard levels, whether they're A or AE zones, or here in Milford, we have the AV and the VE zones. This particular structure has the height requirement of the 13 feet, and then, as I said, the two additional feet is required by the State Building Code. The other point that I wanted to make, and that's on the last page of the handout, you know, the stapled handout that I gave to you, is an amendment that went into effect just this year in Westerly, Rhode Island. It's Chapter 260 of their zoning regulations. 260-20 sets forth standard dimensional regulations. And if you look at Paragraph A, and I'm quoting from it because I want it to be part of the record, it states verbatim, "Building height for a vacant parcel of land," which this is because the house has been removed, "for a vacant parcel of land, building height shall be measured from the average existing grade elevation where the foundation of the structure is proposed." Well, that mirrors our regulation here in Milford. Okay? But if you go to the two sentences down from there, it says, "For any property located in a flood hazard overlay district, maximum height shall be measured from the base flood elevation, the BFE, where the structure is located, as shown on the official FEMA flood insurance rate maps." So, here's another example of a local town, Westerly, Rhode Island, just over the border from Connecticut, where as a result of Storm Sandy, Storm Irene, regulations have been changed to allow, in flood zones, to have the height be measured from the FEMA regulation level. So, that's really important here, and, you know, the point that has to be made and is being made to you is the fact that because of the grade of this property and that five-foot penalty that's imposed on the Weavers, they can't build a house that's two levels of living space with the attic, which is in similar or similar nature to other houses in proximity to them. And when I say proximity to them, that goes to the last three pages of our handout. We took a picture of the house that's been recently built. It's a beautiful house at 165 Hillside Avenue. It's a waterside property, right down the street from my clients. We've measured the height of the building. The building height is 49 feet. They have the 13-foot FEMA requirement plus the two feet, so there's your 15-foot level to start to measure the height of the building, and they have built up 35 feet from that level. So, that building is at 49 feet. My clients, because of the fact that the grade here was, is at 10, by review from staff, they're being imposed a requirement to measure as the regulations provide for from the average mean grade. But here's a clear example, and I don't know how this was done without a variance or if it was done by a variance. We weren't able to get this delivered to us until later today. But here's a clear example of a house that's 35 feet above the FEMA level, and that's all that my clients want to do. These plans that are submitted to you show a house that's 34 feet, 11 inches, above the FEMA level. The last page of the handout shows the other houses that have been constructed on Hillside Avenue. They speak for themselves. Because of the reconstruction in that area, because of the newly imposed levels required by FEMA, all of these houses have been raised at a certain level. I don't know what the average mean grade of each of these lots were, but clearly, my client's house will not be out of character with these other houses, and actually, it'll be at a lower level. If you're across the street and looking at the shore from the houses on the other side of Hillside Avenue, this is going to be at a lower level because of the fact the topography of the land slopes downward. So, these are all points that really weren't brought out at the December meeting. I know that Bill had made some recommendations about changing the roof line and going to an extended gable. We sat down with, or my clients sat down with their structural engineer, with Joe Griffith, and, you know, you're damned if you do, damned if you don't. There's the zoning regulations that were bound by, but the clients are also bound by the State Building Code. The State Building Code would not allow the proposal that Bill was recommending because by extending that gable, it creates a situation where the wind load coming underneath that gable would be of such a nature, structurally, the roof would fly right off the building. So, this is where my clients are at. They want to build a house. They want to build a house that's reasonable. They're not looking for a mega mansion. They're not looking for the, you know, again, anything more than a 1,600-square-foot house to rebuild on this lot, but it's a reasonable request and a hardship exists that's germane to their lot, and that constitutes a legal hardship, which would give you the opportunity to grant this variance. And my last point, 39, it's roughly four feet higher than what the zoning requirement is, but the height of the house would be lower than these other houses that we've shown because of the mean average grade being low. If you have any questions, either I or Jack and Donna can answer them, but I'd ask to Jack favorably on this application.
Questions for Mr. Lynch? Mr. Soto?
Well, I just want to clarify something. What I was saying, the problem with this design is the shed roof on the back of the -- you've got a gable on the front, and you've got the shed roof, which, you know, that's what the problem is.
Which is what they're looking for, to be able to have the utilities up in the area.
Well, what I don't get is you're saying there's utilities, but what are all the windows for if it's not for living space?
It's not living space.
It's not living space. And requirements, conditions-- I don't have any floor plans in front of me, so I don't know.
Yeah, and conditions can be placed on that. I mean, I've had that with the Planning and Zoning Board on CAM applications and--
Well, my suggestion was, was putting a straight gable on the house. And then you eliminate, you probably pick up your four feet right there.
And we ran that by Joe Griffith, and he said, "You can't do it based on the State Building Code."
A straight gable? Absolutely, he's wrong. Absolutely, he can do it. If you have it on the front of the house, why can't you continue it on the back?
I think your recommendation was to lower the--
No, I said you could box your overhangs down.
Right.
I'm not talking, putting elephant ears on the house. I'm just talking, you basically need to go to a straight gable. That shed roof is what's throwing your calculations off.
The house that you're showing us here, 165 Hillside Avenue?
Yes.
Other than the picture you've taken, and who has taken the actual measurements of the house?
My clients did it through Google. There's an app or Google -- Google Measurement can do that.
Okay.
So, those lines are actually from Google--
Evidently, evidently, this house, I never, I can't recall this house ever coming in for any kind of variance, so I don't really know how this was built.
But Joe, those are the numbers, you know? It's basically the same thing of what my clients want to do.
Well, actually, the--
No, this is a straight gable.
The heights can be disputed here.
This has a gable all the way. Doesn't have the shed roof. You have the shed roof. If you look at your drawing right here, your sketch, you see the shed roof going straight across?
Mm-hmm.
That's what's throwing the calculations off.
It's not throwing off the calculation of this house on Hillside Avenue, 165.
Wow.
That's to the center point of the roof line. It's measured right to the center point of the roof line, which is what the zoning regulation calls for.
Looking at this, I mean, everything is basically almost the same as it was six months ago. You know, the setbacks are good.
But, to be honest--
You mentioned the fourth story change.
I don't think there was any, I don't think there was any argument for the existence of a hardship, and I think with these additional documents that we've submitted to you. There was one last document I just leave for you to read, is a letter from Rosa Delora's office, basically going through the fact that all these towns now are grappling with the same problem, and FEMA requires houses to be built at a certain level, and if towns have height requirements that are based upon mean average grade, you're going to see more and more towns making those changes. The problem with my clients, they've been sitting for two years to rebuild. They can't wait for another zone regulation to go, work its way through planning and zoning. That could take another year, a year and a half. They're paying taxes on this property. They're paying the mortgage that was on an existing house on the property. They've been doing that for over two years.
You also mentioned the fourth story change, and we know that's coming about.
Yeah.
But we've had no change so far in the 35-foot height. And I know, I mean, you can present it in very many different ways, but--
There's no change in the height. We're not asking for a change in the height. We're asking for a change in the measurement of the size of the structure, and based upon our current zoning regulations, if you measure from the mean grade, that's where you get that 39-foot figure. All I'm asking for is a variance of that to allow a -- the house is 35 feet, Joe. That's all that the house is. It's 34 feet, 11 inches. But it's a difference in the way you measure from the FEMA requirement versus the mean average grade, which is what our regulations call for now. There's no question about it. We're asking for a variance because that's what our regulations call for now. I'm just saying, after those two storms, towns are changing their regulations based upon the reality of the fact that all these houses have to be raised. Let me pose this to you. Let me pose this one last point to you. My client's prior house was almost 35 feet in height. Okay? If it wasn't destroyed by Sandy, and they were applying for a state grant to raise their house up to the 15-foot level, they wouldn't be before you seeking a variance, and they'd have a house that would be the same as the structure we're proposing to you here. So, if their house wasn't wiped out in the storm, no problem. They'd be raising their house up to the 15-foot level, and we wouldn't even be having this discussion. They just want to rebuild what they had. And it's because the lot slopes downward towards the water that creates the situation.
Go ahead, Mr. Soto.
So, state the hardship. The hardship, let me get this straight. You're saying is the elevation of the property in that lower corner?
Right.
It's -- now, is it different from the adjoining lot next door?
Yeah, because they have the park next door and what's on the other side? With higher levels? No? That's it low? Okay. Okay.
So, the, all the lots in that area kind of have the same contour?
No, not all of them.
Not all of them.
And not everybody's before you seeking to rebuild their house.
Mr. Haberman?
Yeah, a lot of the properties down there in the flood zone that have incurred a lot of damage that have to be rebuilt are going to face the same kind of issue and are going to be asking for the same kind of variance because they're going to be confronted with the same, you know, way it's, the mean grade is calculated, so.
You know, I didn't hear you. Howie, I didn't hear you.
I'm sorry. I mean, it's going to apply to a lot of more properties down here than just yours. I mean--
Right.
I mean, you're not going to be, anyway, so there's going to be a slew of people coming up here asking us for these variants for the same reason that you're giving.
I agree.
Which argues that maybe there needs to be a change in zoning, in the zoning regs.
But with all due respect, they've been sitting for two years to rebuild. I mean, if they don't get this variance, they build a, you know, a 28-foot-high house. It doesn't work.
Mr. Harris, can you add anything on, to our, on our zone-changing regulations that might be coming up, or the height is the height? We know we're looking at four stories. We're not concerned how many stories it is now, but the height is still--
The elimination of the three-story rule was present, will be presented to the full Planning and Zoning Board for their consideration. So, currently, we still have 35 feet and three stories. And of course, Milford measures from average grade, not any other method.
But I might add, with all due respect, that that is going to go before the full Board with a recommendation from the Regulation Subcommittee for Approval.
Yes, the recommendation will be to drop the three-story rule but keep the 35 feet from average grade.
The thing of it is, this house is being completely rebuilt, so there was room to make this the way it should have been, so we wouldn't have to have this argument over the actual height. So, the height is still an issue. No matter how we look at it, the height is still an issue.
It's not the height. It's the way you measure. The house is only 35 feet. This is going to be a 35-foot house. It's where you measure it from, and the lot's in a gully. And I showed you that 160, whatever it is. I mean, you can't, you can't look at a better example.
I know you're showing us this, but we have no way of verifying that these--
I swear to God--
That these heights are correct.
I swear to God, those numbers are true. If you don't want to vote on it tonight and have it checked, fine, you know? I wouldn't, we wouldn't make that up.
Any other questions for Mr. Lynch?
Anything else?
Any other questions for Mr. Lynch? No? Anyone else speaking in favor of this application?
Rosa Delora did.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone here opposed to this application? Please come forward.
Hi. My name is Tricia Page, and I'm here again. I own, my name is Tricia Page. I own 60 Hillside. I was here last time. I'm here again to weigh-- I was here last time, I'm here again to weigh in against the height variance request. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Adam Lebarsky. Excuse me, I also live at 60 Hillside Avenue, which is directly across from 59 and the park, and I also own property at 56 Hillside Avenue, across the street, again, from the park and diagonally from Jack and Donna's property. I'd like to commend Attorney Lynch and his presentation in trying to bring up hardships because as the state statute stands and the regulations for the city of Milford and any other town or city in the state, you have to show a hardship to get a variance. From the current regulations as they stand, not any proposed regulations that may come down the pike in the future. In regards to hardships, it's also stated in the state regulations that there can be absolutely no financial aspect to the approval of a variance over the zoning regulations, which I know all you board members are well aware of. I heard Attorney Lynch mention that the existing house was, and correct me if I'm wrong, Attorney Lynch, 1,500 square feet?
You can address the question.
Okay, I'm sorry, 1,500 square feet, and that the new structure is planned at 1,600 square feet, and that they've tried to bring in to conformity some of the gross outstandings that were with the prior house. I state, and I stated it the last time, that if you overbuild on a lot, and that obviously is what they're trying to do, that becomes financial. You're building a better mousetrap, a more expensive one. Therefore, if it's financial, a variance should not go through as the regulations stand now. Thank you.
Anyone else speaking in opposition?
Hi, my name is Paul Draust, I live at 64 Hillside. I'd like to echo the comments about, I guess, first of all, that there's not a true hardship, given that you can, you, with your suggestions and all, you could build a perfectly reasonable house that conforms to zoning. The arguments about anticipating possible future zoning changes or measuring things the way they do in other localities, to me, that doesn't seem to make sense. We're not here to change the zoning regulations. And I think the zoning is there for a reason, it's to observe the character and the nature of a neighborhood, whether it be with setbacks or heights of buildings, and preserve property values, and we wouldn't want to make a change that would serve as a precedent for widespread change. That should be done if the town decides to, to change zoning regulations. I think that's all I need to say.
Thank you. Anyone else in opposition? Okay, if no one else is in opposition, we do have four letters from people on Hillside Avenue, and they're, pretty much their objection is the height. Other than that, I guess there is no objection to it. Mr. Lynch, you may rebut.
Yes, thank you, just very briefly. I just made the comments relative to the fact that my clients have been paying the taxes to supplement my argument. My main argument is, because of the topography, the grading of this lot, that creates a legal hardship that is clearly under our state statutes, under Section 86 of our state statutes, a grounds for granting the variance, and other than that, I think that we've brought before you a reasonably sized house, it's not something that's going to be overbuilt on the property, it reduces the lot coverage, and quite bluntly, when you live across the street from an empty lot, you don't want to see anything built on it. You have a nice, clear water view, and you don't want to see anything built on it, so I think that's the motivation from the speakers who live exactly across the street from this property. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Lynch? Okay, none? Okay, this hearing is closed. What are your thoughts? Lady and gentlemen.
We did hear tonight that the slope of the land is similar to the others in the neighborhood, so it's, it's not really a unique lot in that regard, and what applies here would apply to all. Something to consider.
Yeah, I think what I struggle with is the fact that the topography and the way the mean grade is measured in our, by our regs, just doesn't affect this particular lot, it affects a lot of lots down there along the shoreline, and in granting this variance for that height relief, we're in essence amending the regulations, and I don't think that's the purpose of this board. If it was just particularly this lot alone, then I get it, it's, you know, it's a peculiarity, it's, there is a hardship, but I think it extends beyond just this lot. And I think, again, by granting that piece of the request would, would be in essence amending the regs, and I don't think, again, I don't think that's the purpose of this board.
Mr. Soder?
Well, I kind of feel the same way, it's not unique to this lot, the contours on the adjacent lots, and I, I mean, as, that as I feel for these people and would love to see them get their house going, I mean, you know, I, I can't see it.
Yeah, I'm also sorry that this has been going on so long and, you know, but I do again feel that because it's a new house, there were, there were ways to adjust this, and, and we can't speculate on how the regulations of variances might change. Right now, we know what's in front of us, and we can debate on what the actual height of the house would be, and we're saying the height might be different because the house is built in a lower spot, so that's what's really changing. I think there's still room for improvement here. Any other comments? Need a motion?
Just a question regarding motions, in terms of the other parts of the application, obviously, I have no problem with the other variances that we requested with this because I think there is, given the, the size of the lot, you know, it's okay to approve, so I'm wondering whether, without prejudice again, or do we split the vote, split the...
All right, so what you're saying, do you want to split some of these things on here and allow some of the variances, or?
Or I, to others, is it deny without prejudice, give them another opportunity to try to...
Or what if we give them the other variances, and then if they conform to the height, they can get, is that possible, Steve?
It's unusual, but it's, it's possible, you could grant some variances and not others.
Well, the height is really the issue, so I don't, I don't know how we can do the other things without really addressing that. How are you going to start building a house with, you know, the variances, and the height is still not addressed, it's still going to be up for debate?
I'm also hesitant to grant some variances and not, to grant some variances without an overall plan. We're allowing something without knowing what we're getting at that point.
We would know what we're getting except for the height.
Right, but I mean, it is a brand-new house, it could be redesigned in other ways, and...
I guess Mr. Haberman's question was, how many times can you deny without prejudice? Again, I would think you could.
That's up to the board, you can deny with waiver to reapply as, as often as you would like.
I therefore make a motion to deny without prejudice.
I'll second that.
Reason for the motion, obviously, the height is an issue for us, but the other parts of the application, okay, we figure that there's room for, to, to change the application.
Deny without prejudice, we have a second on it, Mr. Thomas?
I am with the motion.
Bronte?
With the motion.
Mr. Haberman?
With motion.
With the motion. Okay, old business, are we, do we have anything on old business here? No? Yes, no?
Withdrawn.
Okay, withdrawn. New business? Any new business? No? Staff update? Acceptance of the minutes from May 12? Hearing? None? Okay? Can you look?
Accept.
Okay? All in favor? Aye? Okay. Applications for next month? Just the one that's rescheduled so far?
There's that, and there's also an appeal of the decision for 990 Nagatuck. I think I have the application and the check, yeah. Unless they withdraw, I don't know.
Need a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned.